Time can't be right. Had a special meeting for those that are here, which was a closed session. There was some lengthy discussion there. So this time we need a motion to go back into open session for the special meeting.
Motion to go back into open session.
By Councilman Lemoore, supported by Councilman Felder to go back into open session, clerk.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Before we take a motion to adjourn, because we had a special meeting, I know that most that are here now weren't here at the start. But it was a closed session to have discussion regarding litigation, attorney-client privilege correspondence, land acquisition, and labor negotiations. But as all of our meetings have, we have an opportunity for public comment if there's any public comment related to the special meeting. Obviously, when we adjourn this and go in our regular meeting, there'll be opportunities for public comment in our regular session meeting. So I just want to give away the kind of the agenda where we're going. There's no, if there's any public comment regarding the special meeting? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine to adjourn, clerk.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
So while.
A few more.
Microphone back on. Well, we took a few more minutes there. We're gonna need five minutes and we'll be right back to get started in our regular session meeting. Thank you for those that are here and those that are watching. Clerk, are we ready? Okay, I'll look for miller for the countdown so we can get started. Okay, at this time, we'll call the city council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Here.
Lemoore.
Present.
Felder.
Here.
Whitman. Stillgrave.
Here.
Vining.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Present. I ask that we all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Guide our working together, give us wisdom to make the right decisions, your understanding to listen to each other, and your compassion to promote the peace and welfare of the residents of this community.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, first item, please.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the regular agenda.
Okay, I'm looking. Mr. Pastu, is there any administrative adjustments to the agenda?
No, Your Honor.
Counsel, any adjustments? If not, a motion would be in order.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Motion by Councilman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave to approve the regular agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda, and for item B, approval of payments, the amount should read eight hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred forty-five dollars and seventy cents, eight nine eight, five four five point seven zero.
Thank you. Looking at the consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any items council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask any, those present here this evening, are there any items on the consent agenda that you wish to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Councilman Felder.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted.
So motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Lemoore, that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Germaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman. Stillgrave. Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is presentations, communications, and public hearings is the heading, item three seven one seven, public communication. And that is a couple of letters that were submitted to the clerk's office that were requested to become part of the record, so those are attached per our current policy.
Very good. Next item on the.
The next item is item three seven two five, which is a public hearing on the OPR certificate for eight North Monroe Street.
Mr. Pastu, I know it's for a public hearing. I don't know if you want to have any preliminaries before we have the public hearing.
No, Your Honor, I think I'll wait till Mr. Cochran will introduce the item on council action.
So at this time, is open the public hearing for item thirty-seven twenty-five, public hearing for the OPR obsolete property request there for the certificate for eight North Monroe Street. Any comments in the public hearing from those present here this evening? This is on the agenda, item under council action later. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under council action. It's item three seven three three, obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for eight North Monroe Street.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm gonna have Mr. Cochran just do a brief introduction regarding the resolution.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mark Cochran, Economic and Community Development Director. Over the summer, our department received an application from Portal Holdings LLC requesting an obsolete property rehab abatement for their property at eight North Monroe Street, which is commonly known as a former Masonic temple at the foot of the bridge along the river. The application was requesting an exemption or an abatement for a period of twelve years on an investment, a planned investment in the property of one million, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars. The purpose of the rehabilitation is to rehab the building and put it back into a more active and productive use utilizing the entire facility. For many years, the main level of the facility on the, what's actually the second floor, the street-level floor, has been used and is an event center. But Portal Holdings is proposing to open the Michigan Beer and Wine Portal on the lower level. They've done some work already related to some of the investment into the lower level on the inside, but also you're probably aware or have seen a lot of outdoor landscaping and patio work along the south side of the building, along the River Raisin. The upper floor is planned for some sort of either resident or hotel use in the future, but that's at a future phase of the development. So the Economic Development Review Committee, which reviews all abatement applications and makes a recommendation to city council, did meet two times, the first in September, early September, and they asked the property owner for more information. There were some technical items on the application that need to be corrected, as well as more information related to the investment, the phasing of the project, and the number of jobs that are proposed. And so the developer, Drew Bentley, who's in the audience this evening, I'll say, did let us know that the river buildout for the Michigan Beer and Wine Portal is estimated to be about eight hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred dollars of an investment on the lower level, which is currently underway. The main level for the River Raisin Banquet Center has already received just under forty thousand dollars in updates to bring it up to code. And then the third-floor buildout represents the remainder of the one point eight million dollar estimate for about nine hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. They currently employ five people, and they anticipate employing no less than fourteen full-time jobs once the banquet center and the Michigan Beer and Wine Portal are fully operating and functional. And so, given that information and recognizing that not all the work was gonna be completed at one time and that the project is to be phased over a period of about five years, the Economic Development Review Committee is recommending an approval for five years based on the stated investment and the jobs, with the opportunity to come back and request the additional seven, leading up to a maximum of twelve years with some stipulations, those being the continued successful operation of the banquet center, the completion of the beer and wine portal on the lower level of the property, consistent with what was in the application, commencement of the improvements on the third floor of the property, as well as documentation of the feasibility to complete the third-floor renovations, and then also that employment figures consistent with or greater than the numbers that were contained in the application are maintained. And so what we're recommending is the certificate be approved for five years for the total amount of the investment. I'll say they did have a grand opening, a soft opening over the weekend. They've received a lot of community support, and also council may remember making a recommendation to the Liquor Control Commission that the liquor license be approved, which was approved, which has helped increase the cash flow, greater activity at the event center, as well as hopefully a spring grand opening for the lower level will increase the capital to be able to continue to make the investments into the facility.
Thank you, Mr. Cochran. Is there any questions from city council?
Any questions from city council for Mr. Cochran?
Yes, Your Honor.
Councilman Lemoore?
Yeah, just the additional seven years. Basically, that's something that's at city council's discretion, correct? Based on how they work out the first five years of their, of their building projects, correct?
Yes, so in order to come back and request the full twelve years of the additional seven, they'll have to demonstrate compliance with the stipulations.
So the additional seven years is kind of like an incentive to do the buildout correctly in the first five?
Correct.
Thank you.
As a follow-up to that, Mr. Cochran, also, if this passes by council, it's an extension, then would it be an extension of the current item passed this evening?
Yeah, so the developer would have the opportunity to come back and add the seven years onto this application, not submit a new application for another seven years.
Just want to understand the streamlining, that it's not necessarily we start all over again. It has life and it continues for the opportunity.
Correct.
To continue on. Very well. Any other questions? If none, the, the motion is clear for the timeframe, and I'll entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution approving the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for eight North Monroe Street for a period of five years with the opportunity to extend the certificate in additional seven years upon completion of the required criteria.
Support.
So motion by Councilman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave on item thirty-seven thirty-three, the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for eight North Monroe Street. Mayor Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman. Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is three seven two six, South Rossler Street jurisdictional transfer.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu? Thank you, Mr. Bentley.
Thank you, Your Honor. We're asking the council to approve jurisdictional transfer for South Rossler. It would be adjoining Carnes Park south of West Fifth. At this point, it's a combination of city jurisdiction as well as the road commission, and since we're making improvements, and that project is out to bid at this time, I think all parties agree that it makes sense to just have the city take jurisdictional control of it. It does dead-end at its south terminus.
Any questions from council for the administration, Mr. Pastu? I know we've had this conversation regarding the Carnes Park project that we're approved and working on for the, to be completed next year. There's no questions, a motion will be in order.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that the attached jurisdictional transfer for four sixty-eight, four hundred sixty-eight feet of South Rossler Street be approved, that the Maryland Clerk Treasurer be authorized to execute the agreement and execute the assignment of easement document as presented.
Motion by Councilman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine on item thirty-seven twenty-six, the South Rossler Street jurisdictional transfer. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is three seven two seven, the twenty twenty-two sanitary sewer rehabilitation projects change order award.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm gonna ask Mr. Leroy to come to the podium, but the essence of it is, is that we're looking for council to approve a change order. Pretty sizable amount in this fact sheet identifies the locations, but I think equally important is for Mr. Leroy, talk about the success that's incurred, that's been taking place related to the corrective action plan. Barry?
Yep, Mayor Council, good evening. That's Barry Leroy, Director of Water and Wastewater for the city. This change order request is our typical fiscal year projects for rehabilitating the sewer system. It's the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Worked, there are seven locations, but included in there is an additional location. It's our corrective action plan location. That is, we're gonna, planning on lining the sewer under Mason Run Drain. The change order, this corrective action plan request, excuse me, is part of our, our permit for discharging at the wastewater plant. And in that permit, it allows us twelve years to complete improvements to the system, remove clear water from getting into the system. The, there's four major areas in the system to focus on. One is Stony Point area. There's the St. Mary's Garden area, which is, the Mason Run Drain is just downstream of there. There's the Sunset Boulevard area out there in Frenchtown and in the downtown, essentially south of the river from Union to Kentucky, which is a big area and has a lot of, a lot of little projects for us to work on. There's targets for removal for clear water to get into the system between ten and fifty percent. The years, one and two have been completed, and there's flow monitoring ongoing, and we, where we're at currently, we're almost at the targets through two phases where the work was done out in Stony Point, and we planned originally for up to five phases out there. So what that means is we may be able to peel back our corrective action plan work and focus on other necessary improvements for the wastewater system, which is a cost savings to the ratepayers. We'll continue flow monitoring. We do a lot of smoke testing and dye testing and things like that, home inspections. We'll be following up after the storm sewer system goes in, out at St. Mary's Gardens, coordinating with Patrick's Department Engineering to remove footing drains from getting in the system to help continue in that effort. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions for Mr. Leroy from the council? Councilman Lemoore?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Barry, is it safe to say that the monies for this project are coming from water and wastewater utility bills?
Yes, the ratepayers are paying for the wastewater fund, yes.
Cost of doing business, basically.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
I guess I have a question or comment or maybe for your information for those that are present and also those that are watching. So you mentioned a couple of locations that are outside the city limits. However, because this is wastewater, we have a wastewater authority with the city of Monroe and Frenchtown Township and Monroe Township, correct?
Yes.
So how those come to be in the corrective action plan is, we're better together collectively to take these.
Right, yeah, it's a metropolitan system. It was combined in two thousand and one, the three units of government that the mayor mentioned. It's a forty-year agreement that the city is the operator of the system, and each jurisdiction is responsible for, they own their own infrastructure, but we operate and maintain the system as part of our due diligence with, as the city is the operator. So this work is part of that plan, and we'll just continue to do service with our, with our partners, so.
Thank you. And I know that for the contract that's in here with, is recommending for Sitiform Technologies, a company that we used many years ago when it first started in this new technology. In fact, I know there's things that City Hall referenced in that. So they're still active as are other companies too, correct?
Right, yes, this is a, yeah, we partnered with Patrick's Department Engineering. They bid this out, and usually Patrick's up here talking about these projects. But this is a, related directly to our permit, so.
Thank you. I bring this up because sometimes you see these contracts like this, there are significant amount of money. People wonder how can you pay that and make this simply discussion like this, but it's gone through the, the control board, it's gone through the administration, working with the engineering, as well as with the water and a discussion like this? But it's gone through the Control Board, it's gone through the administration, working with engineering as well as with water and wastewater to collectively serve the community, but also our regional partners that are part of this process as well. So, with that, if Mr. Sell's comments from council, this item 3727, a motion would be in order.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that a change order to the corrective action plan Phase 1 sanitary sewer lining contract be awarded to in Sitiform Technologies USA LLC for the 2022 sanitary sewer rehabilitation projects in the amount of $952,282.80, that a total of $1,014,000 be encumbered to include a 5% contingency, that the formal competitive bidding process be waived, and that the mayor and city clerk treasurer be authorized to execute the contracts on behalf of the city.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine, item 30, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Stillgrave on item 3727, the 2022 sanitary sewer rehabilitation projects change order award. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 3729, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Advance.
Mr. Pastu?
Thank you, Your Honor. City Administration's recommending that the council approve an advance from the general fund to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority in the amount of $77,610 for bond payments for the former Lazy Boy site for this current fiscal year 2223. As we were going forward on this and starting the process, obviously, the pandemic arrived and slowed down a lot of the activity at the site, and as you can see, it's starting to, the construction is taking place, which will generate the tax increment revenue necessary for this future repayment of the advance. It's significant enough, because I thought I needed to put it on council, let you know that there is an advance, but also recognize that the construction is now starting on the site that'll provide the necessary revenues in the future for the bond payment.
So, Mr. Pastu, I have a question. So, as an advance, is there a process or timeframe repayments and how that works in the long term?
When the funds are available, pretty much, as they come in. So, and you know, it might be even pretty tight this upcoming fiscal year, because at the end of the calendar year is the close of the tax for the tax roll. So, we anticipate a lot more development taking place, certainly later this spring.
I ask that because there is development going on, but there's also dates and timeframes of when tax capture can occur, and if it's not fully developed and operational, then it's not a capture to occur to reinvest into the property. So, it's really kind of a carry through for them to make sure that we continue the progress and continue the development of the project. So, just wanted, I always say, you know, because when you hear these, what exactly does it mean? I think that's, I appreciate the response. Any other questions or comments from council? If not, a motion will be in order on item 3729. Councilwoman Stillgrave?
I'll make a motion, move to approve an advance from the general fund to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority in the amount of $77,610 to fund the Brownfield bond payments on the former Lazy Boy site for fiscal year 2022 and 2023.
Motion by Councilwoman Stillgrave, supported by Councilman Felder on item 3729, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Advance. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is item 3737, Authorization to Submit Railroad Grade Separation Grant Application.
Mr. Pastu?
Thank you, Your Honor. Two weeks ago at a work session, you know, council received a report from Manikin Smith, working with Quandell Consultants, related to a couple of alternatives for railroad grade separation for the CSX railroads on the west end of town. Council was presented with the Front Street Alternative and West Elm Alternative. It seemed to be the consensus, West Elm was the preferred of the two for various reasons. But the significance of it is, is in preparing for an application, which would be due next Tuesday on October 11th, we'll need authorization to proceed with submitting the application. I think most of the details are taken care of as far as the grant itself. One of the things that is the most challenging associated with this is coming up with the local match. Overall, the estimated project cost is $30 million, of which 80% would be federal funding, leaving a $6 million local match. And in the fact sheet you received, we hadn't identified where that potential funding would come from to go forward with this. And so, you know, this is probably going to be the one, like I say, weakness, but in the application itself, probably the one with the vaguest aspects to it. In the staff report, we talked about rail crossing, the potentials, bringing in probably a little over $1 million of that $6 million, but I still think that there's some state appropriation opportunities and even local opportunities, appropriation opportunities. And the reason is, is there is a benefit to MDOT, particularly with I-75 corridor, and when there are closures, we know what the impact is in our community, and this would keep an ongoing flow, because, you know, they have I-75, they've got Monroe, 125 Telegraph being primary state trunk lines in there. So, I think part of it would be approach them about committing to a project that would benefit them for their transportation needs. And similar with local, I mean, it's not just a road that, and benefit that would be limited to residents of the city of Monroe. The last aspect of it is, is, you know, Mr. Sell and I were looking at other means of coming up with funding, you know, we're probably guessing if this thing was to be approved, we would not see construction start till probably 2025. So, that's at least a couple years, and there's a lot of work that have to go in with design, acquisition, there's some challenges, obviously, with the Mason Run Drain that would involve a little more time and effort, so. But probably 2025 would be realistic. So, Mr. Sell and I talked a little bit, well, maybe you can put some money aside each year going toward, you know, defraying the cost of that local match, but ultimately, the backstop would have to be, I think, a local bond issue, similar to what you had done in probably 12 years ago for the bridge bond. That's scheduled to mature in 2030. We've got some Act 51 transportation bonds that we've issued, those will mature, the last payment's in 2028. We're finding our way out there a little further than we like, and so, ultimately, we think the backstop would be a presentation to the community, whether to pay for the bond issue itself. Worst-case scenario, it's $6 million, you know, based on what we're looking at right now for the police addition, that's a little under, just barely under one full mil. This would probably be about a half mil. But if we have some other means of defraying that cost, it can, it drop from there for a 20-year bond. So, and I think our bridge millage is .51 mils, .52 mils, so it would be in that range. And there's a good project in which, you know, a lot was accomplished with that community support there. So, that's where we're at with it. Ultimately, City Council's got to decide whether you want us to go forward with issuing or submitting the grant application itself.
So, I'll just start with a comment, and I'll see if there's questions from the council. I see some hands already, but for those that may not have viewed or been here at our last meeting, there was a presentation on a grade separation about basically the road and the rail where they cross, and you have to wait for the trains, and the separation is to make the different level of passage to allow more mobility. This project, as was discussed through Southeast Michigan Council of Governments and SEMCOG and some regional partnership to see where they would be throughout Southeast Michigan, because the city has a report and an assessment, is what puts us in a position to be able to consider this. It's about a $30 million project, but there is a 20% match, as Mr. Pastu went through and talked about the options of how to get there. And I'm sure we'll have updates as well. But there is a timeline, because the revenue that's coming from the federal government is up for the applications here quickly. And I'll just say that we were optimistic, we believe that if we submit, that will be a consideration, that could come back different as well, but at least you have to put the application in to be considered. So, I'll stop there, and I'll start, and Councilman Felder, you have a comment or question?
This may not be a reason to vote against the grant application. I'm, of course, eager, as I'm sure you are, City Manager Pastu, to find out where we're going to get some of the other local match funds. If we are optimistic that we are going to be able to sufficiently supplement them from external sources, I'm, I guess I'm happy to proceed and see how it goes. But if we're to put the question on the table now, if I was willing to put a $6 million bond ask in front of the residents several years from now to be able to pay for this thing flatly, the answer is no. I'm trying to find $6 million worth of utility out of this piece of infrastructure, and I'm looking, and I don't know that I see it. Being on the west end of town, I've been over those tracks right now five times so far today. I'm going to get, I'm going to get a sixth time in on the way home. I think that the residents in my precinct and half of Bryan's precinct here are probably going to be the primary beneficiaries of that, because they have to cross it to go home. We're on the north side of the river and the west side of town. And even being the primary beneficiaries of it, I don't know that my residents would see $6 million in utility in that piece of infrastructure. I don't know whether or not that's a reason to vote against putting in the grant at all, but I would think if I was in MDOT, that it would be a little disingenuous for, you know, to put in the grant application, but then as soon as we were expected to fork up some money, that we did not have the willingness to do it. And I want to be, you know, forward and honest with you from the get-go of what my feelings are on this. So, I think I've made my position clear. Thank you.
Councilman Lamore?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the one benefit to this is that typically, projects like this take, you know, five to six years just to get off the ground. So, we have a lot of time to think about it. And this application is that, just an application. This does not solidify us actually getting anything except for a possibility at getting that grade separation. So, I think time is on our side there. This would be the first real infrastructure project that City of Monroe would have in a long time, besides possibly the North Dixie project of the John Dingle Bridge overpassing North Dixie there. And also, in the future, we're going to have the I-75 interchange, which is pretty much all funded by MDOT. So, I see this as a real possibility for us to, that we should need to take advantage of. And not only that, but yes, yes, our, my constituents, your constituents would utilize this greatly, but also anybody that needs to be served by our Public Safety Department could use it greatly as well, because that would give them the ability to basically flow their people back and forth between those two sides of the track. So, I think it's a, it's a, it's a pretty much a no-brainer to go after the grant application, see where it goes, and then kind of surmise after that, what's the best opportunity for the City of Monroe and its residents.
Other comments from council? I guess I'll follow up. You know, I think about, I think about our community and our communities that are surrounding us, and if anybody, and I don't do a lot of social media, but it seems sometimes people send them to me, and I can tell you, the three that I received over the weekend was about the disdain for the road closures of the trains that were blocking the roads over the weekend, and having to go all the way back around south, I think, Stony Creek to get around, you know, when they are trying to get to someplace. So, I think that there's no question in our community, there's a need for grade separation with the rails and the roads. Now, it's a matter of which ones we select. I think Councilwoman Vining, last meeting, brought some great points up when we talked about this collectively across our community. And while that there's, in the Orchard East, there's several trains there as well, and I think a grade separation there would be warranted as well. But unfortunately, we don't have a, there's things regarding rail consolidation that has been talked about in the past, that the railroads did not do to consolidate onto a track that makes it more challenging. So, that plan has pretty much gone past because of time, but I think that this is the opportunity to show that we, as a community, can put together a project. I think there is the funding side, and I'm, I think that the council current and past has been edicious when how we ask for funds and what they're for. And I think the bridge millage is an example of that, of what the results came from all that and getting done in the fashion it is. I think at some point, we have to take on grade separation. I think this is a project that's before us now, and I do think we should support moving forward. You know, regarding the residents, I live in precinct one, I don't live in six, I don't live in five, but I can tell you that I travel across that railroad, whether it's at Front, West Front Street, but equally as much at West Elm. And I think that the opportunity to present that to all the residents, because they're all of our residents, not just residents of our precincts, but all of our residents, and how they traverse through the community, but also how those that visit can traverse through the community in a safe, because it is a separation, but also a accommodating way. So, I think that we, as a council, you know, look at this for now, as Councilman Lamore said, and the concerns of Councilman Felder of the finance. And I think that we will have to search things through, but if we don't apply, then we won't be there. And I don't know that this, this application will meet some of those that will come in the years to come, when you talk about volume and also trains. But I think if we show that we can do this, I see us with the opportunity to present a future project, and as funding comes available and figure it once, we can figure it twice, when we talk about our Orchard East community and the need to put a grade separation there in the future as well. But that's just my comments. I'll see if there's any final comments from council. I want to thank Administration for, and the work done on this, and the presentation given by the Manikin Smith Group, but also primarily with the Quandell Consultants in putting it together at the last meeting. Those that may not have seen it, I highly recommend that you go back and review the meeting to watch it at our session and what that all means in the project. And also, the clerk's office could provide direction to get to see those as well. So, with that, the item on our agenda here this evening, let me back to my sheet here, sorry, is item 3737. It's the Authorization to Submit a Railroad Grade Separation Grant Application is what's being asked on item 3737. I'll entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to authorize the submission of the Railroad Grade Separation Grant Application.
A second.
There's a motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine regarding item 3737, Authorization to Submit a Railroad Grade Separation Grant Application. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Sure.
That he asked?
Yes.
Thank you.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes. Clerk, next item, please.
I have no other items this evening, Your Honor.
These were the council comments, and it is October, so Councilwoman Germaine.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, my condolences, I want to send out to the Tuttle family. We lost a great leader in our community, and he'll be greatly missed. And I would also like to congratulate Officer Jordan Patterson for getting their lifesaving award. That's all, Your Honor.
For mentioning that, Councilman Lamore?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to offer my condolences to the Tuttle family as well, for the losing Jeff and the voice of Nash Radio. He'll be truly missed in the city and the county of Monroe. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Felder?
Thank you, Your Honor. Coming from a musical family myself, you know, Jeff Tuttle certainly had an influence in this community, and, you know, there were some personal interactions with my family as well, and my wife's. So, he will certainly be missed, not only as his person, but, but, you know, the things that he was able to bring into this community. I was, you know, speaking of music in the community, I was fortunate enough to be able to go to the Miracle Will Still Happen on Second Street Benefit Concert for the Oaks Village Homeless Shelter last week. That was a fun event. That was a fun event. We did a lot of cool things, talked to a lot of cool people. I do have a question for the administration. I did get a question from one of my constituents, and I was, I was stumped. The driveway approaches, the curb, as you approach the driveway, that isn't the approach itself between the road and driveway approach, who controls that? Who Now, we're talking about just past the gutter pan in that area?
Yeah.
Well, the property owner has historically taken care of that responsibility.
I was afraid that you were going to say that.
Like, if you think about also the responsibility and the terrorists, you know, for mowing and that type of thing.
Got you. Okay. I will relay the information. Thank you, sir. It's all the comments I had this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Whitman.
Yes, I think that Councilwoman Germaine was reading my paper that I had made up last. I think that, well, I know that there's very few people in Monroe that don't have stories about Jeff Tuttle. And he's good to be, he was so good to Paula's house that, you know, free time on the radio, did interviews for us, and, you know, things, he went the extra mile. I saw the video of Deputy Patterson. That was nerve-wracking. I, you know, I was, I saw it on the news before I had heard about it, so, you know, that's, and, but I did listen to him say that he had, he was on his way home, and he didn't think he would ever have to use that training in a lifetime. And he has used it already and saved a life. So makes me proud to be a resident of Monroe. And that's, that's basically all that I have. I'm looking forward to the dog park. So when we talk dog park, I'll be excited. Thank you.
Councilwoman Delgrave.
Well, most people do know that Jeff Tuttle and I were very good friends, and for his funeral on Wednesday, they will be having procession through Monroe and asking for people to line up on the street, you know, to go past Nash Icon. And, you know, just travel Monroe one more time. Also, prayers to the Cotcher family, the state trooper that was shot in Detroit. He is from Monroe. He's got a very, very long road to recovery. I'm also good friends with him and his family, so just keep him in your prayers as well. And congratulations to our own police officer. And Kiwanis is also having a, the firefighter of the year, so stay tuned to see who those are. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vining.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no comments this evening.
Okay. I have, I have a few, but I'll start by echoing the council. Jeff Tuttle is a friend and always enjoyed when he'd call and say, "Mayor, when are you going to come on the radio?" And so, and I know that Clerk Lavoy has similar items. We would share those because what was happening in the community. He always wanted to be the voice for the community, always wanted to present what was going on, and he'll be, he'll be missed, but he'll never be forgotten. He is just, was a pleasure to work with, and then you'd start laughing, and then you just have to laugh yourself. I appreciated that always. Officer Patterson, you know, our public safety officer, I commend him for his doing his duty, but also saving a life of a young child. I look forward to the opportunity. We've had some command promotions. I know that the public safety director's working on the opportunity to have those introductions to the community as well as we put those staff together. Great officers that we have and firefighters that we have within our command as we move forward with public safety. So a couple items on the agenda that I just want to review quickly, because I think it's the opportunities we pass a consent agenda, have those items, and sometimes it just, it's important to also recognize that how people are part of our, our community and part of our boards and commissions. There was an application, and I should say, an appointment for Stuart Eastman, who is on the Downtown Development Authority in the future. He owns and operates the Conservatory, which is the plant store downtown. It's a great place. He's already tripled in size since he started. So I thank council for supporting the recommendation and the appointment of Mr. Eastman. We've had some lengthy discussion about trees here at the city over the past year or so, and it was on the consent agenda, and there was 167 trees that, well, about that number, 64-plus trees that are being planted throughout the city. So if you want to know where those are and the type of tree that are within the records, you can find them on the council agenda. There's a spreadsheet that has all the information, so. And it follows up to the last meeting where the Tree Commission was appointed by council and their involvement in that as we move forward. There was an item on the Community Development Block Grant Funds that were some recipient agreements, and those are federal dollars that we received to be able to infuse within the, the community on needs that, that we have and legal services south of central Michigan for those that may need services and legal services for them, the person unable to, and qualify for that. One Sheep Ministries was also received for their support of the community and for, I'll say, for various locations on food distribution. The Elm House, which is for developing disabled adults, a facility to help continue to provide that service in our community, and of course, the partnership we have with the Monroe County Opportunity Program with our community center, but things that they do on the fixed program and those that may qualify for rehabilitation to have funds to go that way. So activities and events, and Councilwoman Vining and I had the opportunity to have a conversation before. So these are some items that are coming up on the, the calendar for this week. The Monroe County NAACP Branch 3164 is having its second annual Freedom Fund Dinner this Saturday, October 8th, from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. And it's at the Opportunity Center at the ALCC. You can get tickets, or you can call them or call the NAACP if you need more, but the, under Event Bright is where tickets can be found as well. The keynote speaker is State Senator Sylvia Santana. She's the State Senator for District Three, a great background when you talk about business, but also in financial arena. So look forward to hearing from her here this Saturday. Before that, also at the Community Center, and I know that Director Tolstad is involved, it's called Faith and Blue. It's a community event from noon to 4:00 p.m. at the Opportunity Center. It's a partnership between the MCOP, the IC Gray Nonprofit, and police agencies, the Monroe and the Sheriff's Department and the State Police. And it's about building bridges and breaking through barriers. And I think that's the community engagement that we have here and community engagement we want to continue to grow and make even stronger. You know, you heard on the agenda item tonight that was passed in the discussion during council action was the, the, at the former Masonic Temple on the Oprah, but, and as I think Mr. Cochran alluded to this past weekend, the Wine and Beer Portal at 8 North Monroe Street, which is the former Masonic Temple, opened up, and they had some good participation. Couple other fun events that are going on, the Parks and Recreation has Bark in the Parks, and it's going to be this Saturday as well, from 12 noon to 2. I see smiles, so councilwoman, bring your dog down, get him dressed up and be one of the Bark in the Park fun activity. They have kind of costumes and things. A lot of fun, couple hours. Please come down to the St. Mary's Park. And then our Monroe Museum, the Monroe County Museum, has October night event on Friday and Saturday, the 14th and 15th. I know it's not this week, but it's, we won't meet again before. That's from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., and it's at the River Raisin Territorial Park, which is at North Custer and Raisinville Road. So there's opportunities to get online and get tickets for that as well. That's a long rundown. I just think it's important to have those events for people to know, but also some of the business activity that gets passed along that people may not hear. But it's my thanks to Stuart again for wanting to support and be a member of the DDA. Thank you, council. Clerk Treasurer Lavoy.
I got my tickets for October nights today, so I'm looking forward to that. The only other thing that I have to share with the community is that absentee ballots, the initial bulk mailing went out on Thursday. Some people in this room received theirs today, but I know, I'm aware that others have not. So if you have questions or concerns, please call our office. We'll, we'll double-check that your ballot is on the way, and then I would give it a few more days before we start to worry. Different routes deliver at different times, so the delivery may vary. But other than that, everything's progressing nicely in the Clerk Treasurer's office, and we're moving forward on the election planning.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Mr. Pastu.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have one item. I know a couple weeks ago, I sent an update to council. You've got a very, very busy fall ahead of you, and so it won't be this week, but probably next week, Pat Weaver in my office, I'll start arranging to meet individually with council members to go through some of those details of the items that we have that you're going to be dealing with later this fall. And so, haven't done it in a while. It's probably been, but, you know, I know in the past, I've done it a couple times a year at least, and I think given what you're looking at, it's a good opportunity to talk a little bit about it, get your insights on a few things before we get too far down the road.
Thank you.
Yep.
So next is citizens' comments. I thank everybody for your patience earlier. We got a little five-minute or so delay getting started. I appreciate you being and staying through here. We had a kind of longer agenda, some items that we normally don't have, so with this time, citizens' comments, just for review as we generally do. If you wish to make comment, please come to the podium, state your name, either your, in your residence, jurisdiction of residence, and be mindful, the rules of the chamber of three minutes. But if you, and I think we'll just stop there for right now. Other comments from those present here this evening? Please come forward, and you can come to the podium, and then your name and...
I got some pictures.
Okay, if you have pictures for us, if you want to hold on to them and use them, if not, you can give them to the clerk, and she'll make sure they get disseminated to council. Maybe afterwards, that way, if you have a reference to it, that'd be great.
Okay. I'm Connie Seminelli, and I live in Monroe Township, but my son owns five rentals in the city of Monroe. I'm told that you are over the Monroe City Police Department.
Well, the Police Department is one of our departments. The Public Safety has Police and Fire Division, but that is Monroe Police Department, that's correct, but not the Sheriff's Department or the State Police.
Right, right. Well, I was wondering, do you ever check to see a certain address that maybe you've had umpteen calls to?
Sure. And in fact, Mr. Pastu would be the, it would go to the administration, and it might, if it's a blight issue, it goes to the Building Department. If it's a health and safety item, it's the Building Department, but also if it's a, yeah, nuisance as well. But police would get involved if there was a, I'll say criminal activity more so, but they would be in support, work together.
They've been called probably at least 20 times.
I think I know the address you're talking about.
606 West Fifth. She lives at, two doors down. And I hired some guys to, can I bring these up now?
Yeah, you have to give them to the clerk if you do, please.
I hired some guys to come and do the cleanup outside, and she was out there kicking it in the road faster than they could clean it up, so I called the police.
Uh huh.
You know what I was told? It's her garbage. But who can throw garbage in the road in six Kroger carts? One of your policemen even helped me move the carts in from the road, and she come out right in front of him and throwed them back in the road. Now, how do you do this? That can cause a wreck. When you have six big carts you're pushing in the road, a TV stand, I mean, this is ridiculous. And I tell you, Pass, Officer Patterson, he was great.
The only one that took a report.
He was great.
All the rest on the side there, okay?
Okay, hold on, because you got two people talking, and you don't have the other person's name yet. Well, we need to, it's confusing if the clerk doesn't know who's speaking, and we have to keep a record, that's all.
Go ahead. We all live on this block.
Get your name, please.
Elaine Farn. I live at 522 West Fifth. I've been here before.
I know.
When are they going to tear the house down on...
Well, that's a question for Mr. Pastu, but I want to, before, before you leave, though, I know that the Public Safety Director Tolstad is here, our Chief of Police as well. If you make sure you contact with him in the conversations on the officers, that'd be appropriate, okay? So you can talk to him before we depart tonight. But Mr. Pastu, I know that the house went to tax foreclosure and sale, and if you know what, maybe the status is, or Mr. Cochran might know. Don't leave him.
Afterwards, let me get a phone number, and we'll get back and touch you with you with the status of where everything is at.
Yeah.
So it has gone through the process, you know, we saw the yellow sign on it, it says it goes to the tax sale. It's just, it's an arduous process, it's time, and I understand it. I'm not making excuses. I understand, because I don't live far from there, and I drive by it at least once a week, if not three times a week.
It's disgusting.
It is, and it's, and we know it's a health hazard. We know it is set for...
The animals.
It's not going to be habitable. We've had that conversation here at council, how we worked through that long process, but on the same time, it's not forgotten. I don't want you to think that. Mr. Pastu, do you have something else?
Mr. Cochran can give a quick update as to the status of it.
Good evening. The property in question, it was one of the county foreclosure properties. It's currently owned by the county, and they've auctioned it off. However, it has been ordered demolished, so we've been in conversation with the County Treasurer's Office about splitting the cost of the demolition to bring it down.
They said August or September. We waited. We didn't bug yous?
I, I know. I saw it here tonight. I knew, I knew.
I mean, you know...
It's on the agenda. We're working with the county on it.
They give her son a blight, $100 blight fine for the stuff that the lady upstairs blew over in that yard. Why not blight the guy that owns the house? Which would make the county...
I think I'm familiar with that as well, because I did see the other material out there, but, so I guess, ladies, want to make sure you know that once it goes to tax foreclosure, then it goes to the county. Actually, somebody wanted to purchase it, but we have, but it's not, it can't be for the, for the house, but it may be for the lot, because the house that's on there is not habitable, and it will be, go through the Construction Board Appeals and items for demolition.
And get a life trap. Are we allowed to trap them and take them out of town? Tell me, is that a law or is that not a law? You don't, you trap them and take them...
I understand what you're saying. You got to remove the barments.
I don't want to kill them. I don't want to kill them. I just don't want them to hurt my six-pound dog.
I understand.
And they're big.
Yeah.
They're raccoons.
Possums, skunks.
Groundhogs.
Rats.
Groundhogs, yes.
Snakes. Yes, it's, it's nice.
Make sure before you depart, you talk to the Director Tolstad, and make sure that Mr. Pastu has a current number for both of you, so we can, when we get through the processes, Mr. Cochran said, with the, working with the county to share the demolition costs, and then we can move forward with this. I appreciate you being here, though.
Okay.
We'll be back if he doesn't done.
Come back. You're always welcome.
And we do vote. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Okay, I have another question for you.
Oh, sure.
Has the city police been told not to do any arrest for misdemeanors?
No. I don't believe that's the case, but I asked, I've never heard that, but I'll let you talk to the Director Tolstad.
Now, some of them told, I got to know just about everyone that works as a city policeman. I got to know about all of them.
Well, there's many, many crimes are felonies, and many there are misdemeanors, and of course, we also have to recognize, recognize how we deal with...
Well, this is what one told me.
Okay.
If we stop somebody in the city of Monroe for a traffic violation, and they got a warrant against them, we can't even arrest them if it's a misdemeanor.
Well, I don't know if that's true, but that's, if you can talk to the Director, he'll tell you. If it's a, if, I'll just give you a hypothetical. If it's a warrant that's for somebody that's out of Kalamazoo, and Kalamazoo's not going to come pick them up, then they probably aren't going to get arrested, because you can't arrest somebody just to take him and walk out the door. So I don't know what the circumstances are, but please talk to the Director, okay?
Well, I always thought, like I said, if you had a warrant...
No.
And you were found, you were arrested.
Well, you would think that. But if the, if the person that holds the warrant...
They do on TV.
Hold on. But, well, the TV does a lot of things within a half hour that doesn't really happen in reality. But the point is, if, if a jurisdiction has a warrant, and they're not going to come pick the person up, you can't, no sense in arresting them to take them there and walk them back over there.
I understand that, but let's say it's our jurisdiction.
Please, please talk to the Director, okay?
No, no.
All right?
To who?
He's right there.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you, thanks for your comments tonight. Thank you. Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes, sir. Name and...
Hi, my name's James Grassel. I'm from Prestink 1. It's an honor to talk to you all today. I wasn't planning on coming up here, but the last motion that we had today, I got the feeling that Councilman Fielder wasn't happy with his, his yes vote, and I've been lamenting on this idea that every city council meeting I have been to has been exclusively yes votes. There has been no, no votes since I've been coming here. There has been things pulled from the, from the agenda, which I assume you may have wanted to vote no on, and that's why you wanted to talk further about it. And I was hoping that you could just maybe elaborate on why there's been only exclusively yes votes from every city council member.
Sure. I can't vote, I can't speak to why council votes the way they do. There are no votes, and there was no vote at the last meeting, so, and that's just, so it's not always, but an item that, so I'll start here. So, items on the agenda, there's the consent agenda. That means it's, it's together. I made comments of three that I thought were worthy of recognizing or making comments to, but it wasn't necessarily that it wasn't being supported. Any council member can pull any item if they want to. Sometimes it's to give recognition or the importance of it, and sometimes it's because they may be in opposition, may be supportive but have concerns, and I think that's kind of where we were in the one item we talked about. There's, there is concerns, but also, do we move forward or we don't? The, in the last meeting, there was a motion that wasn't, it was all, it was, you know, majority was yes, but it wasn't for what the recommendation was, it was actually a different motion than what was proposed. So, items that come to council, that's the consent agenda, then there's items that are a council action. Those specifically are there because we want the presentation from Mr. Leroy. You know, it's, it's a big project. It's not because it's a million dollars, it's because it requires some other opportunities of how it comes through an agenda, it's not a consent item. So, I always tell people that as, as items come to the council, it's not the first time we've heard it. We have work sessions, and then we have sessions here. We had a closed session, which I can't talk about, but there's things that are of importance that the council has a foundation for, but it's not, we don't take action in closed sessions. We didn't come out and take action on it. It's gonna come back later on, and some other action might be through a work session, it might be on the agenda. So, it seems that way that everything is sometimes 6:0 or 7:0 or 5:0, I'm already here, but a lot of the dialogue has occurred to begin with. And while, and Councilman Felder, I won't, I won't question his, you know, his vote, that's not it. I think, I think he raised a good point, and I think I, I shared it as well, and I think council understands that, but there's kind of that item of moving forward. I'm not sure if I'm helping you or not, I, I'm just trying to give you an idea, it's not where we haven't seen and had dialogue as a council at a work session. I always tell people, if you, see, if you go back a work session or two or a council meeting, it may be something that was brought up as a fact sheet. And Mr. Pastu mentioned that there's, you know, we, all the items that we do are in, in open session for our deliberation, but also our decision-making. It has to be and should be that way, but there are things that come to council through correspondence and other information that's available, and clerk's office has those as well. I don't know if I'm confusing or making sense for you, I'm not helping you.
I, I kind of expected a little bit of, of some of those answers, as far as the further discussion that you've had, that we're not privy to, which I understand. You know, I just, I've had the feeling, I mean, I wasn't present for the last city council meeting, so I didn't witness the no vote, but for everyone I've been present to, it's been all yes votes. So, I was, just wanted you to elaborate on it, I appreciate that, and...
It's a great question, thanks for being here. I also tell people that sometimes, you know, attending the boards and commissions, some of the items that came on the lazy boy discussion we're talking about in the change order, the planning commission themselves have weighed in, as the residents will weigh in on that, or the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, they'll weigh in on a project through the boards and commissions and authority they have. There's some things to go to the planning commission, when they make the decision, that's the decision, and council is just getting it to know that the decision was made. Not everything, but there's a few items. So, I, if, if you have an interest, we can get you a list of those boards and commissions, and when they meet, it's available on the city's website. You might have an interest in planning or downtown, or, and it's not, you know, that you're maybe at a point that you want to be, serve on a board or commission, but watching and seeing those. The Port of Monroe, that Councilman Lamore's a liaison to, to see what's going there. So, there's a lot of discussion and opportunities, I think, for residents to get also.
Okay.
And I'm gonna have Clerk Lavoy, I don't want to catch your spot here, but some of the records and how we're getting things, you mentioned it earlier about getting things that the Elections Commission about the getting into the record, I mean, it was a different one, about how the minute track and things that we're recording, how we're making them available to residents.
Actually, we, we had a conversation prior to the meeting, because he had some, he had a question, and I explained how the, the packet, what we, what I bring tonight are copies of the agenda, but the entire packet is available online, and I explained that it's available the Thursday before the meeting, Friday morning at the latest, if there's a technical difficulty, and then, then all of those records stay there in perpetuity. So, that along with YouTube allows residents to go back and view the meetings in their entirety, in addition to reviewing minutes, and like I said, going over the information, so, and you can feel free to call my office anytime you want to.
Okay.
Any citizen can, if they have questions about the information. Just because we've moved to online doesn't mean we've forgotten about paper and the need sometimes for people to have assistance in pulling information, so the clerk's office is available.
Thank you. And I think the boards and commissions as well, we're getting those records more in place for residency. So, the clerk treasurer mentioned the fact sheet, the item, it's more detail. I'm just gonna hold up, because you can see it, maybe others can't. So, I made a comment about these funding for the community development block grant funds, but here's, you can see my highlights, those are the four items that I mentioned, but here's the narrative behind it. So, not only we get it here, we received it back when we had public hearing for the block grants, and we had it in our conversation of what the council wanted to support. So, there's usually a pathway to get us here, but I appreciate the question, because it's pertinent for those that, again, are here or are watching, like, how did they make that decision? That's a million-dollar decision, and we went 7:0, and it was like, that quick?
Yeah.
Yeah. I understand it completely, and we try to give residents and others the opportunity to find some things if they want to, too.
I appreciate the answer, and I don't mean to assume I know what you were thinking or anything like that, it's just a feeling I had, you know, so...
If you don't mind, I appreciate that, because there is a lot of good interaction between all of us here, and I think that you bring up a great point, that you don't want to just rubber stamp everything, but I can tell you for a fact that we do discuss a lot of items prior to this in the work sessions, and different other meetings that we have that are special meetings. So, a lot of thought goes into a lot of the projects that we pass and say yes to, but a lot of that thought process goes to the city manager first, and, and he makes sure that, that we are all on board with things before he actually brings it up here, too. So, there's a lot of thought that goes into this, and it's a great question, and I appreciate you doing that, because that shows you that the true democracy is in action right here in the city council. So, thank you for bringing that up.
I was looking out for the democracy of, yes, James.
Well, James, I think that one thing that's also clear with the city of Monroe is, you know, we're one of the few, I'll say municipalities or governments that, you know, we have our impact here, so we have things that they can watch live, because not everybody can attend to me sometimes, but they can watch, and if they can't watch it while it's happening, it's live streamed, and also, it's on YouTube, and you can go back and say, "What happened on that date?", and you can watch it if you wish to, so...
Okay, I appreciate it very much, and you all have a good day.
All right, you have a wonderful day, thank you.
Thank you.
I know that was more than three minutes, but it's because I wanted to, I think it's, I think I took your time, so...
For his, you know, when I had mentioned, you know, you've got a number of things coming up this fall, I do individually talk with them to kind of get their insight on this before it comes in there, and I can rest assured, some of my conversations have been, you know, pretty detailed, you know, very, and not every one of them, if you look around, they've had some real candid conversations with me as we prepare to make policy decisions, so it's, it may look like it's just a rubber stamp, but it's a long way from there. The sausage making isn't always pretty.
James, other comments from those present here this evening? Other comments for the council, from public comment? Seeing none? A motion to adjourn?
Sergeant Ford?
Yep. There's a motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Stelgrave. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?